All right, I'm here.
Catch my breath. I assume it's 1:00. Let's call this meeting to order at the moment of silence. Thank you. First order of business is approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Minutes of October 17.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 17.
Support. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of October 17. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. And approve October bills. Would you approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve October bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. I do not have those two. We have two payroll changes from the sheriff's office. One is to change Kyle Vinton's payroll status from part-time to full-time effective November 6, starting wage $28,000. And we have one to remove Gage Gardner from the payroll effective October 31. Move to accept both changes?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept both changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. And Deanne.
The revolving loan fund committee met a couple of weeks ago. So we're looking for approval of Town Square Dental. They are looking to expand their business into 105. Piledon East there, right next to their current location. So we're looking at $120,000 at 2.5% for 10 years with the collateral listed there. Additional staff will be added, of course, with their expansion.
Mark, you sit on that?
I sit on it.
You sit on it. Okay, okay. You recommending this?
Yeah, we talked about it quite a bit. Went back and forth on it quite a few times. We want to make sure everything was collateralized right and approved. We did, we discussed this one a lot more than some of the other ones. This is for a lot larger sum. But everybody got comfortable with the terms that we agreed to. And I think everybody on that committee did recommend approval, except for Calvin, because he had a conflict with, because the bank was providing the other loan for them.
Okay.
So he abstained.
All right. The recommendation to approve this?
What does the, what does that leave us with in there?
We had about 186, and we had to leave some back in reserves. So we had to leave about 7,000, 8,000 back in reserves after we approved this one. So, but we also gained about 6,300 per month from our current loans that were going out.
Okay.
And we do have, yeah, we continue to have interest, so that's a good thing. But we are getting all our funds, so.
Move to approve the loan?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the loan to, out of the revolving loan fund for Town Square Dental. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Heather, sign that as a commitment letter.
You sign that. Okay. Thank you. We have a second reading on ordinance 53, regulating operation of ATV, ETB in Maska County. Should we open this up for public comments? We didn't have a time. It's just, anybody have a comment about it? I guess it's now it's time to speak.
I received one phone call in favor of the ordinance in the last two weeks. But I haven't heard a whole lot. Move to approve second reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the second reading of the ATV ordinance in Maska County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed.
I think we can waive the third reading if we agree unanimously. I don't know if we want to do that or if we want to...
I would recommend we do that now.
Move to waive the third reading of the ordinance?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the third reading of the ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Appoint Maska County Solid Waste Commissioners.
So this is due in November, by the end of November. So I wanted to make sure it got on our last scheduled meeting, to make sure we had an appointment on there. I serve on that now. With me going off, I didn't know if you guys wanted to appoint Mark. He was duly elected, or if one of you wanted to be on it, or what you wanted to do. But we had to make it by the end of this month.
Yeah, because we run into that.
Yeah.
We don't have any other ones, we don't have any other ones of what's on there now, right? That we have to appoint?
Um...
Is anybody going off, asking?
I don't think anybody's going off.
I thought you had to put them all...
Yeah, we might as well just reappoint whoever's on there.
I thought it was all...
Yeah, that's probably right.
Okay.
I'll worry about that.
Okay.
Four, Mark. Peggy, John Jacobs, Alan DeBrian, and then our representative.
I recommend we put Mark on there, take the place. I mean, unless he has a vocal reason why not to.
Are you passionate about solid waste?
He's passionate about it. I can tell.
The packets we get are really thick. A lot of love about garbage.
Oh, shoot.
I'll make a motion that we add the four that Sid mentioned that are already on there, Margaret and Mike, to the Solid Waste Commission.
Support. Motion made and supported to rec, to appoint and reappoint those four names to the Solid Waste Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. All right, Mark, what's this one here? I read it, I guess.
I have a, I have a, so the, our case management is going to, they're amping up for their accreditation. They have to do this once every so often. And part of that is that there's an evaluation process. Heather has to do a self-evaluation process and provide it to us. And then we need to do one back for her. And so the first agenda item is just accept the one that she had given us.
Okay.
And so I'd make a motion that we accept this one.
Support. Motion made and seconded to accept the evaluation of the Community Services Director by Heather Rose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Then the second thing is that we would just, she provided me a copy of this that is blank, that we would, we would fill out for her and then submit it back to her. And so I would just, I don't know if all three of us need to do it, or if we could just have you do it as the chair.
Well, we don't have to do any, we have to fill in blanks on this one, or?
The next one.
The next, for the next time?
For her, one's for her evaluating herself, and then one's from the board evaluating her as an employee. And so I think if we just had you, or I could do it, sitting on the mental health region. But I don't, I don't mind doing it, but it should be the chair, maybe?
Make any difference?
We just need to approve the evaluation tool, and all three of us can do it if we want. I mean, it's kind of up to you guys.
We don't actually do the evaluation of Community Services Director, because that's been done, correct? I mean, it's pretty hard to evaluate her when we're never around there, I guess, that's...
She, she evaluated herself.
Okay.
But we're supposed to evaluate her as well.
All right, okay. I think it'd make most sense for whoever's on the health board to probably do it, because they have the most interaction, but...
That's fine. I do have a lot of interaction with her, so I don't have a problem doing that.
Okay.
So what do we need to do?
Just adopt that, like I sent out a blank one. Adopt this form and give me authorization to fill it out on behalf of the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the evaluation tool and allow Mark Dolan to make the evaluation. Correct? That sound good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Discuss grievance filed by Avenue's County.
We, I had forwarded on, prior to the last meeting, a grievance that was, that was filed in South Central Behavioral Health Region, and some of the things pertain to Maska County. And we'd gone by, there was about two pages, and we went down point by point and worked on all, worked out all their grievances. They had formally made application to another region. They had met at the other region's board meeting and asked if they would consider allowing them in, and the other region said no. So they're staying in the region, and evidently we've worked out all the details. So I just wanted to put that on there to kind of give you an update.
Okay.
There were any particular ones that you wanted to know about? I couldn't speak to them.
I've talked a little bit with Heather about it.
Okay.
So we're all playing nice in the sandbox now, huh?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Approved secondary road contract, union contract. Six weeks ago or so, we approved it to be effective next July, but the two attorneys didn't communicate right in Des Moines or something, and they would like it approved effective upon us signing it. And otherwise, it's going to be...
When did we sign it?
Well, we haven't signed anything, because that's what Ann had told me. Well, when she talked to Mike Galloway, he said, no, that was, there was some miscommunication there. So they would like it signed now, and then it'll be in effect when we sign it versus going back and starting over with negotiations, because that's where it's going to go. All right, Dave?
And it would go for the whole three years, or doing meaning of the three years.
So right now, it'll go two and a half years before we have to do it. It'll be back on the same schedule. And I, there wasn't anything major changes in that. The changes we made were pretty minimal, I thought.
How would what we're, how would what we're doing now be changed by approving it now, as opposed to in, whenever, like June or whenever we thought we were supposed to?
Well, it's effective.
My understanding, they could start renegotiating and get it in December or January.
If, if we don't, if we don't.
Their agreement would be set, done at the end of June. So this would carry it through the three years. That was my understanding from it.
So we'd be back on the two and, yeah, it'd be two and a half years before we have to, two years before we have to renegotiate.
So if we don't approve it now, we have to start negotiations again in December?
And we start off with a blind contract, basically.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I don't really want to go there, too bad.
I guess from my standpoint, I'd rather not approve one mid-year. I mean, there's, vacation provisions are different, and I don't know exactly which would carry. I mean, one has floating holidays, the other one doesn't have floating holidays. So we're in the middle of a year, what governs? And I haven't seen, the other one has provisions for 2016, and it has wage increases. And I don't know if those all perfectly match what we approved last year. So I'm probably a no on, I just don't think it makes sense to do one mid-year. And I think it makes most sense to just renegotiate it. I mean, we'll have to see where our budget is at and everything anyway. But according to Ann, she said that anything we approved now would be a voluntary approval.
How much of a nightmare would that be to kind of sort everything out mid-year, as far as the benefit? How much extra work would that be?
I don't think it's a big deal, personally.
I didn't, I think at June, we approved it based on, if they would have approved the contract that was negotiated in April, March, March and April of this year. And the only difference would be that we just took it as the agreement you would continue, if I'm correct, if I remember that correctly, that we would just continue on with what was in the first year of the, of the proposed contract. But because they didn't get it done at the end of the year, they didn't have a contract going into July 1, then I, we had to do something to carry it on, so.
But these, these wage increases went into effect first July.
Yeah.
And we didn't change anything out there as far as time off or anything else. We changed it here. We didn't change anything out there.
We changed the vacation schedule, because they went under the handbook, because they didn't have a contract, so they had to go under the handbook. And so I guess, I don't know, I mean, there's no floating holidays now, correct?
Well, I thought the agreement was to accept what was in the potential agreement that was there. That's where the disparity in the days were, so that's why it was changed in the courthouse to equal it up. And that was the only thing I knew that changed, was here, not out there. They kept the same thing, the same days off, same holidays, same hours. The wages were the same, the benefits were all the same, meant was, was in the proposed SEIU, well, it would have been the SEIU contract that is now with, asking.
But the grievance provisions, there's no, I mean, they don't have a grievance provision now, correct?
Well, it would be the...
Well, no.
I mean, there's no union rep, there's no, there's none of that that governs now. I mean, those are all different. So why would we voluntarily give...
Because we don't want to start over with negotiations. That's one reason. That's my biggest reason.
In South, I mean...
I mean, it was a year ago that we approved that last one. I think it's all stale, anyway. And there's 2016 provisions in that one. I haven't seen those edited out. I don't know what they look like. And there's, I mean, they, those guys had the option to take the contract. It was negotiated, and they chose not to. And so those, the actions have consequences, and so that's my, my view on it, but I spoke my piece.
What's your recommendation, Dave?
You know, when you start from scratch, you don't know exactly where it will go. I mean, you have, but there's a lot of things that could be on the table from both sides. You would save the money of not having to go through all the negotiations and possibly whatever's to get to, or arbitrators or whatever, to go through that. But they did, we, you know, the board did instigate or institute a, an agreement that they would follow on of what was going to be in the new, or the proposed contract that SEIU put together. And there were some minor changes, but nothing like what they were looking for and stuff. Wage-wise was within what we were looking at, because we were at, Willie and I were at the meeting and stuff. So we had knocked out everything that was any, of any change. There was only a deal on longevity and a couple of minor things that they, something. But, and I don't know if that's where they felt they didn't get the union representation. I don't know, because they, because it sounded like they were disappointed in their union rep.
That was, that was the biggest, and he hasn't been...
Not in the contract, but in the...
No. It had to do with their, their representation by SEIU.
I mean, when we were sitting at the meeting that day, that was the, that's kind of what was brought up, was that the contract wasn't a problem. They just didn't feel that they were getting fair enough or sufficient representation.
So pay-wise, they've already been given the same raise that they would have received?
They would have gotten, yes.
I don't know what changes. I guess, other than having to go through the, through the negotiation, I guess I'd be in favor of approving whatever's there, so I'd have to open that back up again.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, that we sign the contract as it is.
Okay, I'll second.
Because I, I think it's, you open that up, you're going to spend, you're going to spend a good sum of money, again, with attorneys and all that process. It could be lengthy, may not be, but it could be. And so that's where I'm at.
Do we know if the union's still, I mean, that was a long time ago, that they said they'd take the terms of the contract. Is that still, do we know if they're going to sign on their end?
Do they have to approve it?
They will.
They still have to.
They will sign it if we sign it. I guess that's, they have to sign it first, either way. So...
But like you, I have not seen the, any of the proposed 16, 17, 18, whatever contract that's out there, because it hasn't really, I mean, it's been finalized.
Well, it's, it's the same, except for these changes that are on the, on the sheet. I mean, everything else is previously the same. And those are pretty, those aren't, just some language changes, basically. It's not much. They could use their comp time until the end of June instead of May 1, and just some housekeeping things.
Because a lot of times in April, May, and June, we're hauling a lot of gravel and stuff in the winter and stuff. A lot of people don't get that chance to take it off in April, and by May, so that was one thing that we thought, instead of having them trying to argue about carrying it over, getting paid out, that they could do it in May when it slows down. That was, there was one contention on that.
Okay. Anything else, or otherwise I call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
No. Motion carried, two to one. Thank you. Number 11 is considered setback for Bruce Vanderbiden. You have that?
He's not here, he's at work. And I went and looked at the site. He's looking at putting a 30 by 40 garage to the north and west of his house. There's a Shelby belt around it, but the house sits on a little knoll, and everything drops off significantly. And there's photos in the packet there that show there's 20,000-foot of vertical drop going to the south and to the west. He's got a septic field on the east side, so that kind of pivots going over there. It's a little flatter, the two hill slopes, but there really is no other place that he can put it there. He's got a retaining wall built there now that has been in there for quite a while. He parked vehicles there. But this is just a machine shed that he's looking at in the garage. So it would be at about 60, he could go to a 30 by 30, it'd be about 67 feet back. Right now, it'd be about 57 from the center of the road.
Is that enough? I mean, is he...
It's on the south side, it's in behind the tree line. 100 is what we try to go with, whenever there's a possibility. But there are some lots, but especially with the smaller lots, it's just not possible. But on this, there really is no other place that he could put this facility, or this shed at all on his property. So he'd either approve the variance, let him build it, or he wouldn't be able to build the shed. Basically, his two options are.
Does it present any type of safety issues for it?
No, it's not on an intersection. It's not where it's going to cause loss of vision from anything. It's, the trees still set another, they're right almost on the, on the rideaway line at 33 feet. So the trees are about 20 feet away from where his shed's going to be behind it. And I think the photos there kind of show where the tree line goes up and around.
Yeah.
And it is quite a fall that goes down through there. And I told him that I couldn't approve it because of the 100-foot setback. So I said, if you want to take this route, you can apply to the board for a variance, and that's what he did.
Well, having them apply for a permit in the first place is something we don't often even get.
Well, we've been doing that on all buildings. We don't charge for non-ha, for how, anything that's not a house, we don't charge. But we try to get people to come in to look at setbacks and intersections, line-of-sight type of deals, where it'll significantly affect the line-of-sight of drivers and the public out there. And this one is in behind a, is in behind a tree line.
But I'm saying I don't have enough fingers or toes to count how many garages just are there, obviously.
Yes. Yeah, they pop up in sheds, machine sheds, and some other things.
I don't have a big issue with that. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve setback variance for Bruce Vanderbiden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
One other thing, it's, I didn't get it on, because I just got the email today, but next week, from the 21st to the 25th, Monday through Friday, because of the tracks on G-71 or 310th Street are breaking up, the pads are coming off, and so it's leaving big holes in between the rails. They're going to be replacing that, and they wish to have that road completely shut off for that five days. Unfortunately, it's during Thanksgiving break, but we'll have to either route them around G-29 through, or, or south on Highway 5, and then come in 137. It'll be for just the through traffic. So it'll affect like the quarry at Minat's Quarry down there, and then people hauling grain to Cargill and schools and whatever else. But they have to, in order to do that, they have to close the road, because they have to take the entire intersection piece out. And then that way, we don't have to deal with it when we go in to do G-71 replacement in a couple of years.
Got a question about where the pipeline crossed a couple of places. Do they pay that damage on the roads, or is that part of that $18,000 that we got up front?
No, they've actually been supplying rock on some places and doing some repair on some roads.
Okay, because I know somebody set up on west, east of Peoria, they, they went across a blacktop, and that needed to be fixed. I don't know if you, if it's bad or not, but that's...
I'd gotten a call to look at it, and they were there, and they said they did not break that piece off. So they were, that's, that was their take on it. Patcher will probably fix that as well. But we've had several roads, Queens Avenue, a few other roads, that they've completely beaten the ground, that they've hauled, paid us to haul rock out there as well.
Okay.
So they have been, if we've asked them to do it, they've been very receptive to taking care of an issue.
That good piece of road where I turned off the highway, or the, across the Skunk River, going up around the corner, past the water plant. Where they went across there, they really crumpled that, they really cracked that in there. But that's not a good road to begin with.
No.
But there's, there's something going to probably have to be fixed there at some point, because it's, you can tell weight went across it.
Yeah, we're going to have to move that project up, because that road is just completely coming apart all the way up through there.
Okay, I, just, just curious.
Anything else, any gentlemen? All right, thank you.
We're going to do the canvas of the November 8 election. I want to, I want to take a minute to recognize Jeff. I just saw Jeff a little bit ago. He's out at Rotary. And he is the new editor of the Herald, correct?
That is true, sir, yes.
Yes, sir. So I didn't catch your last name, but you're Jeff, that's all I know.
Jeff Forward.
Jeff Forward?
Yes, like walk forward.
Not backward, but forward.
That is correct.
All right.
Not to be confused with the guy who's into like alternative energy in Vermont. That's my alter ego. He's all over the internet.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Welcome to Oskaloosa, I guess.
Appreciated, sir.
All right.
I had one other thing that Deanne had brought up, and I was at a meeting with her before this. They want to do some lighting on the courthouse, just to shine, some kind of lighting, when they do the painting with lights. And they didn't know who they needed to talk to, and I said, I guess we could just talk about it, and we don't have to have a formal approval or anything, but does that, anybody got a big problem with that?
Is that all part of this downtown thing, right?
Yeah. I think they just want to put some different colored lights, like not attach them to the building, but like shoot them off from the road.
Okay. They're not going to attach anything?
I don't think so.
Because some of them, there's, aren't they going to leave them up there, some of those lights?
I think so.
That's kind of permanent on some buildings, that's what I'd, I'd heard, but I didn't know.
The ones that are paid for. They did a demonstration before.
Okay.
It's kind of neat.
I don't think that's, not a big deal to me, but as long as they're not hanging stuff off just yet, then that'd take a little more thinking about. Okay. All right, Sue. Besides signing our name 85 times, what do we have to do here?
I'm going to read the abstract of votes from November 8, 2016 election, general election. This is the tally list composite from all of our election precincts. Beginning with the President and Vice President. Donald J. Trump and Michael R. Pence, Republican Party, 7,432 votes. Hillary Clinton and Tim Kaine, Democratic Party, 2,619 votes. Darrell Castle and Scott Bradley, Constitution Party, 35. Jill Stein and Ajamu Baraka, Iowa Green Party, 38. Dan Basick and Mark Elworth, Legal Marijuana Now Party, 9. Gary Johnson and Bill Weld, Libertarian Party, 18. Lynn Kahn and Jay Stolba, New Independent Party of Iowa, 13. Gloria LaRiva and Dennis J. Banks, Party for Socialism and Liberation, 0. Rocky DeLaCuente and Michael Steinberg, nominated by petition, 0. Evan McMullen and Nathan Johnson, nominated by petition, 73. Write-in votes, 95. U.S. Senator Charles E. Grassley, Republican Party, 7,812. Patty Judge, Democratic Party, 2,302. Charles Aldridge, Libertarian Party, 248. Jim Henninger, 88 votes. Mike Louis Thrams, nominated by petition, 72. Write-ins, 5. U.S. Representative District 2, Christopher Peters, Republican Party, 6,585. U.S. Representative District 2, Christopher Peters, Republican Party, 6,585. Dave Lozak, Democratic Party, 3,384. 11 write-ins. State Senator District 40, Ken Rosenbaum, Republican Party, 8,649. Write-ins, 67. State Representative District 79, Guyan Vanderlanden, Republican Party, 6,677. Write-ins, 73. State Representative District 80, Larry Sheets, Republican, 1,606. Vivek Granco, Democrat, 403. Garrett W. Byrd, Libertarian, 61. Write-ins, 2. Supreme Court Judge Brett R. Apple, being retained in office, for, 3,893. Against, 3,590. Supreme Court Judge Marcus Cady, for, 4,189. Against, 3,432. Supreme Court Judge Darryl L. Hecht, for, 3,939. Against, 3,560. Court of Appeals Judge David R. Danelson, for, 4,376. Against, 2,430. Court of Appeals Judge Richard Doyle, for, 4,443. Against, 2,435. Court of Appeals Judge Amanda Potterfield, for, 4,432. Against, 2,430. Court of Appeals Judge Gail Vogel, for, 4,547. Against, 2,306. District Court 8A Judge Joel D. Yates, for, 4,868. Against, 2,183. District Court 8A Associate Judge Kirk Daly, for, 4,706. Against, 2,146. District Court 8A Associate Juvenile Judge William Owens, for, 4,780. Against, 2,098. Mahaska County Supervisor Mark A. Grunendike, Republican Party, 8,531. Write-ins, 105. County Auditor Susan L. Brown, Republican Party, 8,635. Write-ins, 40. County Sheriff Russell Van Renterham, Republican, 8,876. Write-ins, 174. Adams Township Trustee Randy Ruby, 105. No write-ins. Adams Township Clerk to fill a vacancy, Arvin De Boof, 107. No write-ins. Black Oak Township Trustee Norman Trulau, 276. Write-ins, 1. Cedar Township Trustee Paul Wyland, 143. Write-ins, 2. East Des Moines Township Trustee Marvin Ray Westercamp, 92. Write-ins, 0. Kevin Van Donslar for Garfield Township Trustee, 280. Write-ins, 1. Harrison Township Trustee Jim Jaeger, 187. Zero write-ins. Jefferson Township Trustee Steve Rosenbaum, 116. No write-ins. Lincoln Township Trustee Gary Staggs, 194. No write-ins. Madison Township Trustee Robert Poe, 150. No write-ins. Monroe Township Trustee Steven Seitzinger, 79. No write-ins. Pleasant Grove Township Trustee Pamela Saunders, 43. One write-in. Pleasant Grove Township Trustee to fill a vacancy, Gary D. Cook, 41. One write-in. Prairie Township Trustee Robert Van Wielden, 157. No write-ins. Richland Township Trustee Ken Vanderlanden, 215. No write-ins. Scott Township Trustee Leroy Wanders, 164. No write-ins. Spring Creek Township Trustee, 472. No write-ins. Union Township Trustee C.E. Hargis, 120. Two write-ins. West Des Moines Township Trustee Charles McCray, 85. Two write-ins. White Oak Township Trustee Ellie Moore, 108. No write-ins. County Hospital Trustee David Langkamp, 6,224. Amy McGriff, 5,625. 55 write-ins. Soil and Water District Commissioner Urban DeBryan, 6,090. Gene Fox, 5,033. Donald Willamson, 4,421. 44 write-ins. County Agic Dental Counsel Lisa Kincaid, 2,958. Valen McReynolds, 2,308. Andrew Padgett, 3,082. Amanda Van Renterham, 1,4,064. Heather Smith, 2,0571. Michael Sispa, 5,133. 55 write-ins. North Mahaska School Director District 4, Arvin De Boof, 240. No write-ins. Public Measure M for the question, 2,387. Against the question, 1,023. Public Measure N for the question, 205. Against, 58. Public Measure O for the question, 0 votes. Against the question, 0 votes. I need to have you move to certify those and then sign all the signature lines.
Move to certify.
Second. Motion made and seconded to certify the election is presented by Sue. Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can we, can we close the meeting and then sign those if people want to go? I don't know. Is that all right? Any public comments? I just got one thing. I think sometime, maybe in first part of December, we need to have a work session with secondary roads and conservation, and how we're going to approach what we're going to do with how, how that tax money, and have a discussion about it. General discussion, if we're going to, are we going to bond, are we going to bond separate, or are they going to bond their thing? And there's questions to be answered, and I like secondary roads with maybe Rodwell or Ed there, and let's, let's throw everything around and see what's, just a general...
Yeah, we, I've been putting together, going bid-acts and some other stuff, trying to come up with a little bit more ideal, what prices are going to be for some of these projects, but it's...
Would that be, would that be, when Mark can come, I mean, will?
What are you doing, the five-year plan? I don't want to duplicate anything.
No, I mean, we're, I'm looking at, we have to look at total cost of all those things and how, if we're going to, because of like G-T65 just really going bad so quickly, with loading on it, trying to figure out how to move that around and to get some of these things done, and how we're going to afford it with what we have left for farm and market funds, plus what we have for STEM funds. We may have to make some adjustments around to come up with something to tackle the most pressing first, second, however we do it. But somewhere along the line, we're going to be way, way short. And if you do look at bonding as an option down the road, if you want to bundle two or three together at one time to do something to that effect, or do you want to do it over several years? But we have a number of roads, G-38, 65, G-71, G-29, a lot of these roads, G-77 is, takes 650 alone east of Eddieville High School, and it's starting to come apart too. So sit down with, with all you and come up with what we need to do, and where we're going to have to go, and how we're going to plan, or, you know, if we don't use federal funding on something, gives us more latitude to do more than if you use federal funding.
I don't know if you want to, want to look at, maybe after the first morning, board meeting in December, or you want to pick a different morning, or...
We can do it after.
Do you at all want to do it? I guess that's...
We could do it after the meeting, you know?
Would that work? And then we'd just throw it open.
So we're already going to be here.
Is that, which day is the meeting in December? Because I've got a farm and market meeting.
Five.
I'm going to tell you wrong, probably.
Yeah. Don't rely on my calendar. It's... 5th of December is first Sunday.
It's five.
Yeah, I, because I think we have a calendar meeting that we have on Wednesday of that week, and then I got farm and market review, and I think that's also the engineers conference of the names that week, too. So...
Okay.
That's fine.
Let's set that after our meeting on the 5th of December.
5th of December.
Dave, you bring Linda with you, I guess, or whatever you got.
I'll bring everybody.
Oh, yeah, I'll bring everybody.
Do we need to bring a bond person? We met with those gentlemen well before.
Yeah.
Who would be saying like 10:30 or 11:00?
Yeah.
About then, 10:30?
10:30.
About right after our meeting.
Right after our meeting. It could be 10 o'clock.
Yeah, it could be earlier.
No earlier than 10 o'clock. We'll, we'll wait, I guess, until it's at that time, because unless something's really going on, and meetings haven't been running too long.
I mean, because I don't know, as far as the Conservation Center, there's, I mean, we kind of know where they'd stand there, but it's just a matter of getting those bond guys to start moving and getting the paperwork done and...
We moved our meeting back to the 8 instead of the 1st because of Bill's never in on the 1st anyhow. And then we're going to have the architects and the construction manager there. We've got a list of 17 proposed displays. They won't all be up at once, they're six different categories, and so we're going to have the architects and the construction manager there so we can try to plan for it in the actual construction drawings instead of retrofitting things later on. So off of that, we are meeting on the 8. So I have board numbers here on the 5th. And if you want the architects or anybody else here, I can buy them. That's up to you guys.
No, I don't know. You, you talk about bond guys, are we, do you pick who you want? Do we don't have to go out to get a request for a proposal, do we?
Or would we want to look at what we actually have, I mean, is the conservation, do you get us more ready than that? I mean, are we looking at for road projects as we put them into the five-year plan? You know, whatever, maybe we need to have them there to see what, you know, of it so we could set some of these, because we may have to do a couple of projects, road projects of some length in one year. And that's the only thing that we're looking at is, is how we get the funding, or which way we go with it. How, and it'll also address how we treat the road, or what we do to it.
I think that when they were here, they said that you get a better rate if you package the two projects together, and so I think that it makes sense to have both of them. I mean, as much as what we're going to do, we need to have the different options that they're going to give us.
Basic costs that are going to be if you, yeah, that we could maybe be better off for us financially, I think, from what I've seen. But I can, I can, if you want Jeff to come down, them guys, they're, they've been, they're good, I've known, been around them for quite a while, they're good people, and I can see if they want to come down and offer some input, or I can get some information from them, whatever you want.
And those guys that were here before that, Michael Hart, I forget the other guy's name, from Northland Security, I just received an email from them, they'll be at ISAC later this month.
They're always up there, so...
And as for like the 65 project, we've already got that pre-while priced out as to where we're going to be on that. So, got a good idea on that. And what we have on G-71 and the other projects.
Okay. We'll figure on that. I'll talk, I'll talk to them, see once before then where they're at. Anything else?
But none of this changes what we're doing to spring to G-5T, or is that still?
Now, G-5T, depending on how we, if we take the federal funding out of it, it gives us more latitude to do different things. If we stay with G, with the federal funding, then we're limited to what it says that we have to do under the design manuals and stuff. It's still in there, it's just how we wouldn't tackle T-65 because there's not much we can patch to that road anymore. It's basically one patch on top of another. But if we were looking at changing that and reshaping that intersection, or how else, I mean, it's going to take more than what we have budgeted for, by about twice as much.
Which one?
G-5.
I thought that was all, I thought we already decided all that.
Well, it's, the way it's set is now is the way we're going to go ahead with it. But the road's actually in pretty decent shape. There's only a few sections that are, that's really bad, other than just redoing it and changing it, you know, trying to get some grade, get more sign distance out of it. And that's kind of what we left it at. I know you weren't happy with it, but I, I kind of went by what the manual told me to do on that and stuff like that. So we're trying to, to keep it in budget because we have all these other roads that are coming apart. And we were, I wasn't figuring on G-65 until '21 or '22, and there's no way it's going to last that long.
Well, I'm just more worried about it getting done.
Right.
We told all those people, those people said the board has broken their promise a thousand times over to do that road.
It's still in the budget, but we'd have to come up with a different funding mechanism for G-65.
Okay.
That's the, that would be the only difference. If we keep that there, and we've already got the program agreement signed on it.
Yeah, because it's...
Go ahead and do it. If we do a different type of funding to do T-65, and maybe do 29 at the same time, because they're all in one spot, we might get a lot better price for the two of them together. We still have federal money available for G-71 and farm and market, depending if we just use bond money or whatever else on that. It depends on what we're going to do and how much you guys want to look at. If we do bond, or if it's even approved to bond, what we can do there, because that'll all make a big difference on how we shift stuff around and keep stuff in some kind of sequential order and, and get these really bad roads fixed first. I don't, I don't want to make any changes until I sit down with all you and visit with you on it, because I messed up the first time, and that was my fault. So I don't want to have that happen again.
Good enough for me.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Um, before we adjourn, are we meeting six days from now? Probably not going to meet.
I don't...
I had one person. Did you find out whether we need to have that variance?
It's right up the edge of town. Where they want to put his shed, they want to put it right along the east side of the house, up against Lynn Street. It's not going to be the variant, they've got room to push it back, it's 100 foot. It just gets in behind the house. I remember him talking about it, but I told him at that time, the setback is 100 foot from the road.
Well, he, this person I called in wanted to be on the agenda on Monday, so... That's, and then I think there was also one other thing that could be on the agenda on Monday. It's up to you.
Don't make any difference to me. I'm around if you want to do, or you want to wait till the first week of December.
If he was looking at building, we'd at least be able to answer that question for him on that. That'd be the only thing.
Well, it's the way you described it, I don't think he's going to get a very favorable comment with it.
I, I see where there's room back there, but I don't know if he's on city septic. We're still digging some of that stuff out. But I did get a call from him a week or two ago about it, but I hadn't heard anything about it since, and then until I came back, and then I found out that they want to be on the agenda. Because I did tell him from where he was proposing it, it was too close.
Was he want to be on the agenda for?
I imagine to ask for a variance.
Ask for a variance.
Because I think they're only selling off just a portion of that property, and they're trying to keep the farm grass separate. So that doesn't leave them a lot of room, and then you get close to being along the property lines and so on and so forth.
Which pleasure, you want to meet next Monday or not? You want to wait two weeks, what, three weeks? Next one about?
December 2.
I'm okay with December, I don't know.
I'm okay with December. Okay?
But in case anybody asks you, G, or G-71 will be closed all next week for the railroad repairs, so if you guys and the press can get that out, and we'll pass the radio stations and everything, because we'll have to route people around, and hopefully most of the harvest is done, so we won't cause a big inconvenience. It'll be a bigger problem for the schools and the postal carriers, is what I'm worried about, get the kids there and stuff. And the rock quarry down there, they can bring trucks in and out there all the time. But, you know, they can go to the west, they just can't go all the way through to 7, our Highway 163.
Got to fix it, you got to fix it.
Yeah, it's, it is really bad now. The plates are just peeling up off of it. Someone's going to get hurt real bad. We also signed an agreement, I did with them, to fix the one just used the ice cream factory on 150th up there, because the ties are rotted out in between the rails.